It is 6 o'clock and I'd call the meeting to order if you would stand for a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
Okay, thank you and welcome everyone, welcome everyone watching at home. Madam Clerk, if you call the roll.
Trustee Harn.
Present.
Trustee Gutt.
Present.
Trustee Dan Mariscal.
Present.
Trustee Diane Mariscal.
Present.
Trustee Carter.
President.
Trustee Carter.
Okay, we are at item four, approval of the Board of Trustees minutes for Tuesday, September 18th, 2018. I would ask for a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved.
Have a motion. And a second. Any questions or corrections? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. We are at correspondence. Madam Clerk?
I do have some correspondence this evening, Mayor. I have a letter from Julie Beavalt. It says, "To the Village of Peoria Heights trustees, Mayor Phelan, Administrator Dustin Sutton, Sarah Whitrock and others, my heartfelt thank you for all your support for this September 16th event, Open House in Heights. Allowing the village hall to be open and used that Sunday was perfect for the event to have an information center for the public. From beginning to end, your approach to present a community-wide event was the backbone that made it a success. I can see this becoming an annual event and would be honored to continue its growth." I also have a thank you here from Brian Johnson from GPSD. He says, "Mayor Phelan, I simply wanted to thank you and your team for the opportunity to meet and talk about current issues. GPSD appreciates the positive relationship with Peoria Heights and looks forward to many years of exceptional public service." The last thing I have is a letter here from the Peoria Park District and it's pretty much just a notice to the public, so if you have any questions on this, you can notify the Peoria Park District. But pretty much they're saying, as you may be aware, the Peoria Park District is proposing a referendum for vote on the November 6th ballot, asking district voters to grant authority to sell Raccoon Lakes, a parcel owned by the district in Southern Peoria County. If you have any questions, contact the Park District. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. So we'll be at announcements. We do have a fantastic event planned for the children and families of Peoria Heights for Halloween week, so I'm gonna ask Sarah to tell you all about that, since she's doing all the planning.
Sure. A week from this Saturday, which is October 27th, we have our first annual Halloween event in Peoria Heights. We're partnering with the Chamber on it. It's called, it's just a bunch of Hocus Pocus in the Heights. We're gonna have a parade at 3 o'clock sponsored by the Chamber that will walk all the way down our business district to Heritage Square and back. Then from 4 to 6, we're going to have a trunk-or-treat. We have about 31 to 33, I can't remember cars, participating. About half business owners, half residential. We're very excited about that. The Oscar Mayer Wiener Mobile will be making an appearance. They reached out to me and were very excited. I heard it's very hard to get them to show up to events, so that was quite an honor. They will be here joining us for that, as well as other businesses. Also during that time, we'll have live Halloween music. And then at 6 o'clock, oh, also we'll have light professional portraits for those in Halloween costumes. And then at 6 o'clock, we'll have Hocus Pocus the Movie. So it's free. Chili will be available for purchase, so hopefully everyone can make it.
All right, thank you. On to the trustees' reports. The first is economic and community development. Trustee Dan Mariscal.
Thank you, Mayor. I have nothing to report this evening.
All right, police. Trustee Carter.
Um, I don't think we have anything to report at this time.
Building and property maintenance. Trustee Gutt.
Thank you, Mayor. As far as I know, everything's going okay, so.
Okay, thank you. Fire. Trustee Riker.
Thank you, Mayor. I have nothing this evening.
Public works. Trustee Harn.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have anything tonight.
And administration. Trustee Diane Mariscal.
I'm gonna have Dustin explain what we're doing with the insurance. We had talked about this at a previous meeting and he's got some updates on how that's going.
Thank you, Trustee Mariscal. Next week, I'll be bringing to the board, we had met a couple weeks ago, Trustee Carter, Trustee Mariscal, to kinda go over some options for the employees here. I think we came up with a great package which will give the employees three different options. Not only will this save the village between $60,000 to $100,000 annually, it will also give the employees some great options. So we plan on bringing this back to the board next week with the Platinum, Gold and Silver Plan, so that will be for your review next week. So just wanna give you an update. And also, we will have, Tammy from Pearl will be coming over and we will have a meeting with all the employees, kinda go over these changes and options that they have before the end of the month, so they'll understand exactly what they're looking at and what best fits their family. So, and I'm sure we'll have more questions next week, but just wanna give you a heads-up that we did meet and that'll be in front of you next week. That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, that's really good news. Anything else? Trustee Mariscal?
Uh, not at this time, Mayor.
Okay. On to comments from the audience. Any comments from the audience tonight? Yes, sir. Please come forward and give your name.
Uh, my name is Casey Keppel. Thank you. My name is Casey Keppel. I am, excuse me, I'm the counsel for Mr. Norman Gates. He applied for a special use permit at 3707 Vincent. He wanted to, he is applying to use the lot as a used car lot.
Would you like to speak to that, sir, when we get to that? Or you can continue on now, whatever.
Oh, it's at the discretion of the board, I'm sorry. I thought that...
You're welcome to...
Okay, sure.
It might be more pertinent if you come back when we get to that item.
Okay, I'll do that then.
All right, thank you.
Yes.
Anyone else? Public comment going once, twice. Yes, yes.
Should I take that now or would I have to wait?
Come on up, please, Tessie.
I just wanted to read a letter from the Economic Development Committee. So my name is Tessie Buckler. I live at 4611 Miller in Peoria Heights. I'm on the zoning board of appeals. And last night, the ZBA voted to unanimously approve, to recommend to the Board of Trustees to approve ordinances 1570 and 5071 to provide for an overlay district in the Peoria Heights business district. Our board has been working for months on this project, working to educate the community about form-based code and to answer any questions and concerns residents and leaders might have. Members of our board have met with various community groups, including the EDC, the BDD and the Superintendent of Schools, and they've received favorable responses from all groups. So I wanted to read a letter. You guys have this in your packet, I believe, and it's from the Peoria Heights Economic Development Committee. They were not able to be here tonight, so they wanted to have a letter put into the record. This is addressed to the Peoria Heights Village Trustees. Dear Trustees, we are aware there is an upcoming vote by the trustee board to approve zoning board of appeals recommended zoning changes for a form-based code overlay district for the central business district extending from Glen Avenue to Lake Street. Both Rick Pitzel and Kathy Stevenson attended our last meeting and they shared the presentation they put together about the benefits of form-based code to Peoria Heights. The changes to the zoning code the ZBA is recommending will enable future development to maximize land use and revenue, generating square footage for both the village and the developer. We fully support the form-based code overlay district and encourage your full support as well. We all share a common goal of improving the livability and financial well-being of Peoria Heights. This change will help us move in that direction. Signed Gary P. Pearl and Wayne Baum, both PHEDC co-chairs.
Okay, thank you. We may ask one of you from the ZBA to come back up when we get to that item. Anyone else under public comment? Yes, welcome, Craig.
Hi, dear. Craig Masters, 1404 East Marietta. I'm also on the zoning board of appeals. The item Tess was discussing, they have put hundreds of hours of labor into organizing this and it's for the benefit of the village. I don't know if you've ever really took a close look at it, but according to the way our codes are written right now, if we had a major disaster, like some of our other communities have had, whether it be tornado, fire, gas explosion right in their downtown district, it would be mighty hard to have the owners rebuild like they are because of the way our codes are written. So what this does is enables them to have the leeway to come back the way they are, plus it promotes the walking aspect by continuing the theme, I guess, of the village here on down farther, so that we encourage the walking people that want to stroll and look and window shop and buy trinkets, eat, whatever. So I think it's a very good deal that they put a lot of effort into and a lot of thought and counsel, excuse me. I didn't want to slight you, 'cause you put a lot of time in on it too. So anyway, I hope you really take a good look at it and use it to update our codes. Thank you.
Thanks for being here, Craig. Anyone else? Okay, public comment going once, twice. Public comments closed. We're on to old business. Any old business to come before the board tonight? Hearing none. On to new business. The first is ordinance 2018-1570 and ordinance amending Title 10 of the village code of the Village of Peoria Heights for the purpose of adding a new Chapter 11 providing for overlay zoning districts and amending Title 11 of the village code in order to accommodate the subdivision of land in accordance with regulations applicable within an overlay zoning district. Trustee Mariscal could have a motion to approve this?
Uh, yes, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance 2018-1570.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I do. Mr. Pitzel, do you wanna come forward or one of your members of your committee, just give us a quick, or Kathy, or both of you? If you would give us an explanation of what we're doing here tonight, it'd be great.
I think this First Amendment...
What about me?
Rick Pitzel. I'm the chairman of zoning board, 722 East Glen Avenue. I think this First Amendment just changes the code so that we can have overlay districts. And the next thing that you'll have on your agenda is the actual overlay district for the business district down here from Glen to Lake Street. And I think the vision is to, by making this possible in our code, we can then start putting overlay districts not only in the business district, but we can put an overlay district maybe down on 29, an overlay district down War Memorial Drive, even residential districts. We're talking about, you know, the project last night from Katie Kim on Samuel and different areas that we want to develop from a residential area to make sure that it's, the look and feel of the houses becomes greater, maybe more of a walking-type community and that the, you know, down to the actual look and feel of the houses and the finials and that sort of thing are all consistent. So it's, to drive consistency, it's to help developers really too. If you look at our code, it's very, very difficult to wade through what you can and can't build, so that's the purpose of the allowing overlay districts and kinda the vision of creating more and more overlay districts, so.
The only thing I wanna clarify is, when he says drive consistency, it's kind of an oxymoron there, because we're really trying to keep the creativity that we have in the Heights and the diversity that we have in the Heights. And so the form aspect of it is really to try to match that form, so you have things that fit in with what's here, but also allowing you to move in a direction that is going to allow us to capture some of the trends and changes in demographics that are happening. So with that, is there any questions?
Questions, trustees?
I have a question. So the original ordinance, was that the 1970s when they passed the original zoning ordinance?
Yes.
Okay. So what were they doing in the 70s that's, I'm just asking you, 'cause I know you have your head around this really well. What's different?
What's different now?
I understand, I understand what you've said so far, but...
So, and actually, the 1970s ordinance, I feel like I'm shouting here. The 1970s ordinance, basically the premise of that started back in the 1920s and it was kind of the industrialization of, in America. And really, we started to have downtown areas where people were living and then you had factories next to them. So that's where it started, but it didn't really manifest itself until the 70s. And by that point, you really separated uses. So you had your industrial in one area, your commercial in another, and if you kind of envision, I'll say Knoxville in downtown Peoria, you have kind of that industrial area that you have, you know, whether it was where Hyman Walkers was and the Stockyards, that kind of area. And then you work your way out. You had a commercial district and then you started to have your residential. And so it really spread those out. As a result of doing that, you have a lot of infrastructure as a result, and if you don't have population increases to support that, it becomes very expensive. Peoria is experiencing that right now. We've kind of thought it was a curse to be landlocked in the Heights. It's actually been a blessing in disguise, because we have not grown, so our infrastructure has stayed somewhat contained, but it's still important that we maximize the land use that we have, 'cause we are, we only have so much. So, you know, we don't have, we have some larger suburban lots, if you will, but more of it is when you're looking at the residential. For instance, in the Heights, in the 4600 east side of the Heights, there's nine businesses in that footage, that frontage that's around, I think, 220 square, 20 feet. The CVS, which everyone thinks I don't like CVS, but I go there all the time, but it's a national, you know, kind of a franchise, so it's easy to use that. It's a little bit bigger, I think it's 230. There's one business. Now, it's a larger business, but I think if you were to compare all the employees that are in that business, it's probably around 10 per acre. If you compared, I'm sorry, a total of 10 there, and you compare the other one that's three-quarters, it's somewhere around, I think, 50 or 60 employees. So you're getting more equalized assessed value. It's 1.3 million in that block. The CVS block is $324,000 an acre. And that translates into sales dollars as well, the more you kind of pack in. Now, it really goes back to the way we were designed in the Heights and the way the Heights was configured back in kind of that pre-1920s era when downtown was built.
So the way it's written now, like if one of the little buildings would burn down, like say, the worst Sullivan's is that, and they wanted to build their building back.
Right.
The way that the zoning is written now, it would not allow for that building to...
We can, we could grant a variance, but we would, you'd basically have to, you'd grant a variance for, but I guess the more important thing is, they have the right to build back. It's not up to us where they build, it's up to them. So they have the right to build according to our current zoning. They could come to us and ask us for variances to do away with parking, but if you had that small of a lot and you had to meet the parking minimums that we have and you had to meet the side setbacks, you wouldn't have much left. You'd basically have what was that Glass America on the corner of Kelly Avenue and Prospect, something to that.
Is that why CVS is kind of laid out the way it is? Is, would be, did they do that because of zoning?
Exactly. Well, I mean, a lot of franchises have their own footprints that they have, but there's a lot of...
Yeah, it looks familiar. Whenever you go to a CVS, they always kind of look similar, the layout's similar.
And a lot of them do, but in many cities, in many smaller communities, you'll see a CVS that's in an old bank building, you'll see them configured very differently, and whether it's a CVS, a Walgreens. But if they wanna be in an area and they're gonna get the traffic that they want, they'll conform to your zoning. So in the CVS property, you could virtually, and the depth of that property is substantially deeper than what you have up here. So because of that, you could actually have had parking in the back. They have to have, I think, per the code, and I might be off a little bit, but I think they had to have like 40-some parking lot spots. They don't have, I mean, you never have 40 people there. If you've ever seen 10 there, that would be a lot. So it's not that we're doing away with parking, we're just not telling you exactly how many you have based on square foot that may not have any rhyme or reason with your business. So in essence, we could have had businesses that were built up to the street, which would make that a little bit more walkable, and you could have had multiple businesses there as well, because you could have had longer storefronts and then you could have had parking in the back.
So the new zoning would be more friendly to a small area like we have in the village?
Exactly.
Than the old zoning?
Yes.
And I think a higher and better use of the property, we could, you could show that.
Absolutely. And that was my number with, they're on 1.38 acres, they pay around $45,000 in taxes. The three-quarters of an acre from, on the 4600 block is, they pay about $98,000 in taxes, those businesses on three-quarters of acre. So substantially difference.
Are there any cons to the new zoning you guys are proposing? I mean, I've proposed...
I mean, I think, you know, I'm a believer that, you know, there's always something that you have to deal with. It is built into it that you could ask for a variance as well. So, you know, are there gonna be things that come up? Absolutely. But I think we're gonna have, it gives us a better shot at controlling our own destiny and maximizing the space that we have and kind of transitioning, if you want to make more use of that whole corridor, instead of having it just be up north and trying to go down to the trail and take it beyond that, this will enable us to do that. And you have some businesses, last night there was a gentleman in the audience that has the used car dealership, and some of those businesses, TNT, I mean, they couldn't get any closer to the street. So there's some people that aren't gonna be affected, you know, unless you were to, you know, down the road, if you narrowed the street or something, you might put parking on the street that I'm sure they would all love, but that's not included in this right now.
Right, yeah. So you're not, you're not requiring or asking anyone, any existing businesses to do anything different, just anything that's being built from this point forward will adhere to the...
Anything that's being built and then anything with, if it was over a 10% of the fair market value in terms of a renovation.
What does that mean?
You just look at if it's a major, if they were doing a major renovation, that you would enact it. So it would, so let's say if it, if the building has, you know, 1.5 million, if they were doing $150,000 renovation or something substantial that would require it, but...
Save-A-Lot today.
Yeah.
Oh, is it?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, anybody else?
I have a couple questions.
Go ahead, Trustee, record.
So Save-A-Lot, say they were to do a major renovation, would you make them move their storefront out to the road?
Ideally, you would want them to move to the road if they were doing a major renovation, yes. Now, there are ways to, you know, get at that and, but yes, ideally, you would want them to come out. Ideally, you want a wide sidewalk going all the way down and, I mean, there's, you know, going further, there are examples of grocery stores that have actually residential above them now, and this actually allows that kind of mixed use, that you could do something like that, to really maximize kind of that space. But it would be, I don't know that Save-A-Lot would be doing something like that, but there could be another grocery store that would come in. But if you look at Save-A-Lot even...
Yeah, if they were to be sold and somebody else wanted to do a, you know, a reno, that would be, I mean, 10% really wouldn't be that outlandish. So...
They could tear it down.
No, we would not force them to tear it down.
No, but renovation would require them to move it out front.
You, I mean...
Really isn't conducive to a grocery store.
That's frankly why we put the variance procedure in there. They would ask for a variance.
Do you have a map that would show the affected areas? You're talking about Samuel to Lake. Is that just on Prospect or are you going down the side streets?
It's just including anything that's in the business district, so anything that's B1, B2 and B3.
Like I said, do you have a map that shows...
That's something we've gotta work on.
I don't, the zoning map though. If you look on the zoning map, all of the red and pink properties are, along Prospect between Glen and Lake are included. So the best map...
Glen and Lake.
Yeah, it's not Samuel. So it, there are some businesses that wrap around the corner right now that are where it's zoned and that those would be included. And it's really meant to, I mean, the numbers themselves will make us more profitable. An example is the 4500 building. You know, before the taxes or the, that you were bringing in on that were pretty miniscule. The assessed value on that new property being built as densely as it is, the equalized assessed value that the tax rate is applied to is $1,456,000, and that's based on an appraisal that they have provided to the assessor's office. So that's $139,000 that is incremental to us. Now, it's in the TIF district, so it's a while, but when I talked to Dr. Heath and was relaying that, he was even excited at the fact of what he's just gonna get now in terms of his percent of that. So that's, that's the significant nature of it, in terms of how...
So one of my problems though is that, where TNT's is, for example, you pull up to the stop sign there, it's very difficult to see the traffic that's coming because that building is so close to the road. And it's not a problem up here where we have stop signs and everybody's aware of all the pedestrian stuff and stuff, but it's not that way down south farther.
TNT's addition in the front was actually done without any zoning approval. So that, I would have to look at it, but I believe that they're actually, you know, that little addition that they added on, that is, I don't know where the property landed. I haven't looked at that one specifically, but I can tell you originally they were set back and then they added that on and that was done without any approval that I'm aware of.
I think it was done when we banned indoor smoking, and so it was originally for the smoker to go out there and smoke.
Right.
And then they put the curtains down.
Right.
And now when you pull up there, you literally, you know...
That's a funny point. The setback here is 25 feet.
Yeah, so it's...
They never gave for variance before, for zoning board, when I was on zoning board to ask for closer to 25 feet.
And I was on the zoning board when that happened and it did raise some eyebrows, but it was allowed to go through without any approvals.
Well, we'll be running everything through the zoning board from now on.
Okay. Any other questions? So we really encourage your...
Also, trusty, what you were saying, I think part of your, there would be a wide sidewalk. We were saying, we're not saying two stories. I mean, actually, I would say that for most of us, which is that addition, how far it goes to the street right now is probably too far. There would be a substantial sized sidewalk for walkability and everything, so it's not, I just wanna make sure you're not thinking that we're wanting all the businesses to leave absolutely straight. We just want it so that they're not required to build to a setback or to build to one, that all the buildings are...
Yeah.
And the idea is also, I don't think any of us want to make the current businesses incur, you know, we're not out to make them rebuild their stores or anything like that. This is really more of an idea to provide a plan in a way so that new development is consistent and continues what we have on two blocks of Prospect, you know, from Glen to Kelly. So we're not really looking at trying to provide any sort of hardship for major, you know, projects that current businesses have to do. Really looking at this towards the development in the future.
And just to echo the sidewalk, there is actually a requirement in terms of the sidewalk, 'cause that's the whole point, is you want people on the street that are buying things that the stores are offering, and so that's the idea. And if, when it gets too narrow, you don't get people walking if they're close to traffic. That doesn't happen, and that's obviously your experience besides trying to drive out there.
Yeah. I just, I wanna be developer-friendly.
Right.
I want people to come here and say, "Oh, you know, these guys are great to work with." I don't want them, "Oh, you know, we don't, we can't work with that."
Right.
So I wanna make sure that, you know, by doing this, that we're friendly to developers.
Oops. And that's what we want to be as well, and this code was actually written for a developer initially, and that was because someone wanted to be able to ensure that what they built, the things that were gonna follow, were gonna be up to that same standard, so...
And if they wanted to improve Save-A-Lot, I want them to do it.
Absolutely, absolutely. And we would certainly work to do that, because I think having a grocery store, you know, a full-service grocery store here that would look better would help a lot of the other things that we're trying to do as well. So I absolutely would support that. And, you know, I appreciate Mark bringing that up, 'cause that's absolutely true. So there will still be variances that would be allowed and that we would consider as well. And we're not, we're trying to promote bringing more business, not take it away, so...
Those are good points. Trustee Riker, and I think one of the points you illustrated was what happens when things don't go through the ZBA, that sometimes they can go wrong and you don't get the best product, but it's not scientific, but I certainly noticed that would... would, in the 45, 46, 4700 blocks, blocks of Prospect, you see people biking, you see people walking, we would like to direct more of that foot traffic down to the other businesses south of Marietta, and I think this plan eventually will do that, and make it more pedestrian-friendly, so I see a lot of the members of the ZBA in the audience tonight, I appreciate you all being here, and I believe this passed unanimously last night?
It did.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, we're still at a discussion for the board, any more discussion on this? Okay, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee Harn.
Aye.
Trustee Gutt.
Aye.
Trustee Dan Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Diane Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Riker.
Aye.
Trustee Carter.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, that passes, thank you. Next, we'd be at ordinance 2018-1571, and ordinance designing the Peoria Heights, designated, designating the Peoria Heights downtown overlay district, and approving a plan that shall apply within the district. Trustee Dan Mariscal, I'd ask for a motion to approve this.
I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance 2018-1571.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I do. Discussion? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee Harn.
Aye.
Trustee Gutt.
Aye.
Trustee Dan Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Diane Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Riker.
Aye.
Trustee Carter.
Aye.
All right, that passes, thank you. Next, we'd be at a request for a special use for 3707 Vincent Avenue, trustee Mariscal.
Thank you, mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the request for the special use for 3707 Vincent Avenue.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Keppel, please come back.
Thank you. Again, my name's Casey Keppel, I am the counsel for Mr. Norman Gates, he applied for the special use permit at 3707 Vincent, Mr. Gates is out of town, he wasn't able to be here tonight, he was here last night. Last night, the zoning board voted four to two to recommend denial of Mr. Gates' permit application. I'm here tonight to request that the board reconsider the recommendation of the zoning board, and to approve Mr. Gates' special use permit. As I'm sure you all are aware, the requirements for the special use permit are here in the section 10-3-4-E. Last night, I did not hear any evidence that, that what he wants to do cannot meet these requirements. What I heard was a member on the board expressing concerns of neighbors from the previous owner, and that's how the previous owner was using it. Specifically, some of the concerns were that it would be operating at odd hours of the night, that cars would be dropped off, things like that. He said that per his license with the state, and he is licensed through the state to do this now, he has to conduct normal business hours, nine to five, so that would alleviate any concerns that there might be someone dropping off a repoed car at 2:00 in the morning. Parking is available, the last, excuse me, the last permit that was granted on this property allowed for 25 cars on the lot, Mr. Gates estimated that 40 cars could fit on that lot, so there was a concern that if people are coming to look at cars, they would be congested, congestion in the street, and so on and so forth, that indicates to me that there would be plenty of room if people wanted to come, needed room to park their cars. Another concern was that there would be mechanical work being done there, there's going to be no mechanical work being done on this property, he doesn't even have the resources at that location to even do that, so that's not really a concern either, and these were, last night, the reasons that it was denied, and so, again, there was really no reasons that, that I heard, that why these, again, my understanding is these reasons are what's supposed to be considered here, and, you know, and I, and it's a, a goal, my understanding of the villages is, you want businesses to come, you want the tax revenue for the village, and I, from talking to the previous owner who ran the same kind of business there, it brought in about $25,000 of revenue to the village every year, and so I, I think it would be a good thing for the village. A member of the board also expressed that these concerns of the neighbors, but, you know, I, I found it interesting that none of them found it important enough to show up to the meeting, and I understand that some people have handicaps, and it's hard for them to get around, but there was not even a letter in opposition submitted to this, so there were, there was absolutely no opposition to it, as a matter of fact, the people that were in the audience last night were in support of it, so, you know, the people, the people that I witnessed were in support of it, so I'm at kind of a loss why it wasn't approved, I know Mr. Gates was disappointed, and so, you know, another thing too, is this board can put conditions on the permit, you know, if it's a concern that no one is operating there late at night, you can put it in the permit that he's got to operate between certain times, which my understanding is already in the state application. And then, I guess, the last point I'd like to make, that is, my understanding in the ordinance is, is if this board decides that it can't approve his permit tonight, there is a function that I did see, he gets 10 days to file an objection to the recommendation, and then it would go to this board at the next meeting, obviously, with these meetings being back-to-back, I was not able to get anything on the record as an objection, so I would just ask for time to do that, if it decides it can't grant it tonight.
Are you asking us to defer that, this, sir?
I'm, yes, if you can't grant it tonight, and you're not willing to overrule the recommendation of the zoning board, I would ask that it be deferred, so that I can file an objection to the recommendation.
Counsel, guide us through our options here tonight, please.
Yeah, sure, of course, the ZBA acts with special use applications as the body that hears the evidence, conducts the public hearing, and then makes a recommendation to this body, so it's completely the prerogative of this body as to whether or not the special use gets granted. That's true if the ZBA recommends approval, and it's also true if the CBA recommends against approval. Counsel is right, if this board denies the special use, or if the ZBA recommends against it, the applicant does have 10 days to file written objections, so, it's, it's up to the board as to how you proceed tonight, you can call it for a vote, and if the board votes it down, then I think technically, as a matter of operation of our ordinance, counsel would have the opportunity to file written objections, and that would force us to hear it again.
I, I live down that neighborhood, I know exactly where, there's always been a car lot there, my problem is, I don't see 40 cars on that lot, I don't see how you can squeeze, maybe 20, 25, but 40? I, I don't think so, because the previous people who have been there, when anybody had to go check those cars out, they parked on the side streets, so, his parking, unless he makes an accommodation for less cars in that lot, is going to be on the side streets, and I, I don't have a problem with a car lot being there, I said there's been one down there for, well, Mike, how long's, you know, a long time, it just depends, and I'm sure your client's a great guy, but I just, 40 cars, I will have a real problem approving 40 cars, but, other than that, I'm willing to listen to the rest of the story, so, 40 cars is too much.
And I guess, till we can review the special use permit.
I think we want to get this right, so, before I ask for a motion to defer this, I'm going to ask Mr. Pissel if he wants to add anything to this, we do have, I know it doesn't change anything, we did get an email late today from another member of the ZBA, Sarah, would you read that real quick?
This is from Sarah Dvor, she's the secretary of the zoning board, it says, "Since I am unable to attend tonight's meeting, I wanted you to speak on my behalf. I arrived late to the zoning board meeting last night, and was unable to vote on the first item on the agenda. After listening to the audio recording of the details for the special use permit for 3707 Vincent Avenue, I would like the Board of Trustees to know that I would have voted in favor of the permit."
It wouldn't have changed the vote, but I wanted to read that into the record. You want to add anything, Mr. Pissel? Okay, I would ask, yes, sir.
Could I share something that I think is very important that the trustees...
Are, are you representing the...
I'm the property owner.
Okay, you'll come forward, sir.
Thank you, I'm Gary Kempf, and I own the property, and I had the car dealership there 17 years ago, when we did come up to get the permit, and at that point, we were issued a permit for 25 cars. With the 25 cars there, I probably had them maybe three or four times, to where there's actually 25 at a time, we'd sell maybe two or three cars a week. At that time, we could have probably had 35 easily. When, probably had a good month, I might have got down to where there's 10 cars. If I have 10 cars, or if I had 25 cars, most people, when you're a car shopper, they don't want to pull into the lot, because they're afraid that the car salesman's going to come out and jump on them, so they like to park on the side street. We put parking signs to where they came in, we had it on the front of the office, we couldn't get them to come in. Four years, I ran that car lot, and I've never had more than two to three people at a time on the car lot, so if there's ever a car from a customer that wanted to be there, it might be one car on that street at a time, and that was in four years of my experience of being there, so I'm pretty sure that there won't be an issue with cars parking in the street. And if he has a 25-car parking permit, which I believe the representative shared, he only said that he thought that it could fit 40 cars, he has no intentions of putting 40 cars there, I think he's very comfortable with 25 cars, which would allow probably about 10 cars and a tow truck, if needed, to come in or out, or for whatever, or delivery trucks, because all the time I had 25 cars, we'd have three rows, one in the very front, which would hold about 14 if I squeezed them, and then two rows behind, and then some cargo vans on the back of the fence, and cargos, I'd have anywhere from five to seven, and we did a tremendous amount of business locally and statewide, and it was very good for the community, and I think it brought in great tax dollars, so, I just, obviously, being the owner, I'd like to see it be a beneficial business for the heights, it's, it's very, it's limited on what we can do there, and the traffic that we have, about 30,000 drive-by a day, it was very, very productive, so, if that could help you guys understand.
No, thank you, thank you, sir. So, counsel, we would, if the majority of the board wants to defer this, we would do that to the, defer to the next Village Board meeting?
Whatever, the meeting after Mr. Keppel is able to file a written objection, we don't want to force your hand, I mean, you have 10 days from yesterday, but would you be able to get the written objections unfiled this week?
Yes.
How about if we just, how about if we just defer this until you advise the Village Administrator to put it back on the agenda?
Very good.
Could I have a motion to do that, please?
I make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion on the, the deferral?
I, I have one quick thing.
Go ahead, trustee Harn.
Just the words, repo cars dropped in the night, that gives pause, we fought that for, God, 20 years, spent probably $100,000 at least, fighting over repo cars, so, we, we don't, we don't want them dropping any cars on the street, on the city streets, you know, for, for storage or any other reason, and then, the business hours should also take effect where there, there's not, you know, people are going to walk up on the lot in the night once in a while, that's just people being people, but they, they probably should have hours of operation, and then stick to those.
I, I agree, and I don't think, tonight, we're taking a position for or against, we're just deferring this so we can get all the information to make a good decision, and I'm actually going to ask trustee, trustee Mariscal if he would help, when this resolution comes back, to take a look at it, and make sure we cover all the concerns.
Absolutely, those were mine.
No, thank you, thank you, trustee Harn, those, those are good questions, I think we'll get back into those concerns the next time.
Like I said before, all those years, I don't think there's ever been a problem with that, that's all I get.
Anyone else on the deferral?
Yeah, I, I'd like to defer it, I'd like to talk about it at departmental, and then vote on it at our next meeting, that would probably give...
We can put it on for discussion, and, and not action.
I would like to review that special use permit when, when we...
Good, that's a, that's a great point.
Thank you.
So, we'll, we'll have that on the next departmental meeting. Anyone else? Okay, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee Harn.
Aye.
Trustee Gutt.
Aye.
Trustee Dan Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Diane Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Riker.
Aye.
Trustee Carter.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, that passes. All right, next is a request for approval for purchase of a water service vehicle and hydro vacuum excavator not to exceed $40,000 total, using Water Department Improvement Loan Funds. Trustee Harn, I'd ask for a motion to approve this.
I make a motion to approve this.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Dave, welcome, Mr. Marfel, would you or trustee Harn tell us what we're doing here?
We spoke about this a few weeks ago in the departmental meeting, the original plan, what I spoke to you guys about, was to put a $20,000 cap on each vehicle, after speaking with Mr. Casey and some thought, we decided to, to ask to put $40,000 cap on both vehicles, that would give us some wiggle, wiggle room to purchase those vehicles, it would make the process a little bit easier, so basically, it's just a language, change in the language, and this, these funds are being used out of the 1.5 million dollar Water Department Improvement Loan, that was approved a couple of years ago.
You recommend it, is trustee Harn?
I, I do, all that, all that he's saying is, if you find one for 22, and the other for 18...
Yes.
It, it will not exceed the $40,000 cap, it's just the money can be allocated toward whichever piece of equipment they come up with first.
Yep.
Questions, trustees?
What are you going to do with 659?
That's the, I'm sorry, that's the rescue truck, we are going to trade it in, probably. It's, when, it was given to us originally, it was a great idea, due to the amount of space in it, we have found over time that maneuvering that thing in Village Streets, when you have road closures and stuff, due to water main breaks, it's not an easy, and it's also, as far as our storage down at the garage, it's not easy to store, it's a pretty big vehicle, great vehicle, but just, it's, it's, it's too big for us, and what our needs are, we need something a little more smaller, a little more compact.
So, this $40,000 cap, is that including the trade-in of 659, or not?
That is not including that.
Yeah, probably not, because who knows what you'll get.
Right.
So, you're actually not trading it in on these vehicles?
Yes, we do plan on trading on, on that, yeah, we, we plan on trading it in for the, the water service utility vehicle, that's what we, that's the plan, if we can get a good deal, it's not, you know, it's not a guarantee, but, go ahead.
I guess we could amend the motion to say up to $40,000 plus the value of the trade.
Well, you don't know if that company's going to take that trade-in, it could be a third party.
We might have to dispose of it another way.
Well, you trade it in, the company's going to take that amount off the vehicle anyhow, so...
What do we think that's worth?
It was valued, uh, three or four years ago, at about $3,300, I have the appraisal in the, yeah.
All right.
The point is, we're not going to keep it, we're going to either trade it or sell it.
Yes, whatever, you know, yeah, whatever the best option is.
Okay.
Anyone else?
It's kind of a unique, it's kind of a unique vehicle to be, you know, for trade-in, some guys are interested in, some say, "No way," you know, it just, just depends on who you deal with.
Anyone else? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee Harn.
Aye.
Trustee Gutt.
Aye.
Trustee Dan Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Diane Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Riker.
Aye.
Trustee Carter.
Aye.
All right, that passes. Next, a request for approval for relocation of water tower communications line from the Water Department Pump House at 1201 Kingman to the Centennial Building, located at 1203 Kingman. Trustee Harn, I'd ask for a motion to approve that?
I make a motion, we approve this.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, go ahead.
Okay, our current branch for our Water Department, our computer system is at the pump house at 1201 East Kingman, that is the, the building that, I guess, the corner of Park, Park and Kingman, the older, the building. That current location, that is the only thing in that building that's being utilized, is the computer system, so we are going to move that computer system to the, I call it the Centennial slash Chamber Building, which is the brick building to the east of that, on the corner of Euclid and Kingman. That will free up that entire property at 1201, the pump house, the Village can do that, with that as they please. It requires a communication hard line that is ran from the observation tower here, it's ran underground, to the pump house, and this, these quotes are to move that line from the pump house to the brick chamber building. There are two quotes, one's from Kerner, and one's from Laser, and...
You're recommending Kerner, though.
Yes, correct, yeah, like I said, once that computer system is moved, that building will... Like I said, once that computer system is moved, that building will be freed up. It basically is going to be an empty building, that can be used for whatever purpose, you know, need be.
And this will be in a secure place in the new building?
Yes, it'll be in a secure location. Access only by Village...
Okay, questions?
So, in order to tear that building down, I know that, that there's pipes and valves inside the building that connect to the, to the water mains.
Yes.
Were those disconnected, or were there just blinds put on? Would, if someone tore that down, and they grabbed a hold of a pipe, would they affect our water system possibly?
No, they, they are, they are disconnected. Yes, they are disconnected.
Okay.
Yeah, and you do have the storage tank, the, the old water, uh, storage tank in the back, which, I haven't dug into it yet. There may be some, like, EPA standards you have to do to, to tear that down. I haven't gotten that far yet, you know?
How deep in the ground does that tank go? Big water tank?
Yeah, yeah. Twenty-five, thirty feet.
Wow. So, what you see sticking out, it's just the tip of the iceberg?
Yeah, yeah.
Hmm, okay.
Anyone else?
Are there any uses we could use for that building? Or is it in a condition that it needs to be torn down?
We, we think that we can repurpose that building, or even lease it.
It's got a lot, it's a lot of, a lot of charm to it, a lot of history. It's a, I mean, I wouldn't tear it down. It's, it's a, it's a historical building, got a lot of charm to it.
Yeah, there's no intent to tear it down.
No, we've had some recent interest.
It's just so small, I don't know what you'd do with it, you know? Oh, well.
Okay. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee Harn.
Aye.
Trustee Gutt.
Aye.
Trustee Dan Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Diane Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Riker.
Aye.
Trustee Carter.
Aye.
All right, thank you, that passes. Last, we're at approval of Peoria Heights Police Department Dispatch area HVAC systems repair in the amount of seven thousand five hundred forty dollars. Trustee Carter, I'd ask for a motion to approve that.
I make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, go ahead, Trustee Carter.
Okay, from my understanding, the Police Department is having problems with the air conditioning part of it. And if you look, their, well, rule is proposed, there's two here. One, to just do the air conditioning, less the furnace, which is forty-three hundred dollars, or we just replace the whole thing. The heating and the air conditioning, because the heating's probably going to be next, it's going to have to be repaired, to do it for seventy-five, forty. So, I recommend that we just nip it in the butt right now, and just get it over with, and do the seventy-five, forty. So, correct me if I'm wrong, but wasn't it, I mean, it had to have been within the last year and a half, didn't you guys, didn't your air go out? And we had, we put out quite a chunk of money for a new system, didn't we?
Yeah, there were two air conditioning units down at the Police Department. This unit was actually cooled the dispatch center, which everyone here is aware of. We consolidated, obviously, under the state mandate, so we're in charge of this, this cost. So, the timing of it, if this would have been pre-state mandate, this would have been the nine-one-one's bill, but unfortunately, since we are no, we have no equipment in there, it's our offices, it is our bill. But, yeah, to answer your question, we already replaced one air conditioning unit down there. This is the second that went out.
Two air conditioning units, one heater, is that right?
I believe there's, uh, might be two furnaces as well in there. It's a pretty large building.
So, this one here is just the one unit?
Correct.
Where the air is out?
Correct.
We're going to redo that. How, how, like, how much of that office space does that cover?
I would probably say a quarter, if not a little bit more, yes. From the garage back, where all the electronics are kept, all the servers are kept, from all of our, all the computers and databases, so I would say, probably, maybe more than a quarter, more like thirty-five. But it, it was the brain box for the old dispatch area. Like I said before, we moved everything out under the state mandate.
Anyone else? Okay, if you're ready for the question, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee Harn.
Aye.
Trustee Gutt.
Aye.
Trustee Dan Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Diane Mariscal.
I mean, I understand that you need air and heat, I guess. I just didn't realize that there was two systems running in that. The building doesn't seem that large to me, that...
Well, to change that, it would take major duck work, I guess rewiring into one unit, but that, that was there when we purchased the building. So, I guess the only, the only other alternative would be not, to not have air or heat in that part of the building, which, again, there are offices, there are servers, there are certain things that, you know, we do need that for, so I'm not sure there's another option. The only thing I would say is we could delay it, because obviously, we don't need...
Right now, we're in the middle of calling the question.
We don't need air, because it's cool, unless we're looking at the entire package and replacing both of them, and we do have money in the budget to do this. But if you were going for option one, obviously, it could be delayed till the spring, so...
I would just like to see how much it would be to replace the whole thing. I mean, as opposed to just putting out seventy-five hundred dollars just to fix the air, which you're not going to be using right now.
That, that is replacing the furnace.
Oh, that's the furnace?